Members, this is a special meeting of the Panel on Food Safety and Environmental Health. We have a column, so we call this meeting to order. And first of all, may I ask the Secretary to invite the Administrations and Deputations in? We have two items on the agenda today, and we have a two-hour meeting. So we'll be discussing the incident of hairy crabs detected with dioxins and regulation of import of fresh food produce. Deputations are invited to attend. And I think at most, we will discuss this item until 10 past 12. We have another agenda item. We didn't have time to finish this item at the last panel meeting. And this is about site formation and associated infrastructure works for development of columbarium at Sandy Ridge Cemetery. And we shall discuss this item until 12:40. So may I welcome the Administrations we have today with us? Dr. Sam Yung, Consultant Community Medicine, Centre for Food Safety. Dr. Gloria Tam, Controller of Centre for Food Safety. Dr. Sarah Choi, Assistant Director of CFS. And also from the Food and Health Bureau, Mr. Kenneth Chan, Principal Assistant Secretary. So welcome. And may I also welcome Deputations attending the meeting for this item on hairy crabs. We have received replies from nine representatives of hairy crab importers indicating their wish to attend the meeting, but one of them is otherwise engaged. So we have eight representatives today. Now, we're going to invite the Deputations to speak in the order as listed. Each will be given a three-minute speaking time limit so that we have time to open the floor for questions and response from the Administrations. So may I remind the Deputations that over here on the screen, you will see the countdown timer. And when three minutes is over, the beeping device will go off. And if you cannot finish your speech, please give us a written submission. And if you're using the earpiece, please be reminded that channel zero is floor, one is Cantonese, two is English, and three is Putonghua. And when you speak, please speak into the microphone. There's a microphone in front of you, so speak into that. And when you speak at this meeting, your speeches are not protected or exempted under the Legislative Council's Pass and Privileges Ordinance. The same applies to the written submissions you give. And please also note the security measures set up in the notice. May I first invite the first Deputation to speak? Mr. Hau Kai Kwong from Shih Pung Trading, Hong Kong Limited, three minutes. I have a question for Food and Environmental Health Department. Now, after inspection, it is found that our crabs did not have any problem. So about the crabs discarded, I want to know what the compensation arrangement will be. Now, as far as my company is concerned in relation to the import of hairy crabs and aquatic products, I'd like to know the standards of testing because on this occasion, no standard has ever been proposed. So can you tell us in the future, say in the next quarter or next season, what standard will you adopt? Are you going to adopt the same standard for aquatic products from different countries of origin? Because as far as the testing method is concerned, it takes a long time. It concerns us how long we have to wait. Because on this occasion, after we sold the majority of the batch of crabs, you trace back, so it has a bearing on us. Well, these are questions. The Administrations noted down your questions, and they will answer your questions later. Do you have any other comments? I think you need to be more transparent because we have provided a valid certificate which shows that the crabs are safe for consumption from the country of origin. We do not only import crabs from the mainland. We have various hairy crab products. So does it mean that the same certificates have to be produced for all products? Or how much detail should be set out in the certificates? How should the testing be done? I really want to know the answer to these questions. And also, is it confined to hairy crabs only or shell products, aquatic products? Because it has a great impact on our trade, not only confined to hairy crabs. If there are no other comments, I will invite the next Deputation to speak, Mr. Chu Ka Ching from Warki, Wing Cheung.
We have been selling hairy crabs at retail level for 56 years already. It's a long time, and in my recollection, we have never encountered any medical incident or food safety incident leading to hospitalization of everyone. Fifty-six years is a long time. Hairy crabs themselves are not toxic. It's not unfit for human consumption.
Our practice has been to conduct tests immediately, but we found that no laboratory in Hong Kong can provide a report on dioxins. We were very surprised. And we asked why there was a lack of such tests, and the reason was Hong Kong does not have such technologies, and the tests must be done in Europe. And as such, they are very expensive, and no one can understand the reports. We agree with the FHD that food for consumption in Hong Kong should be safe. However, we failed to adjust to the changes, and we hope that there's room for us to handle the issue of dioxins, for example, by giving a deadline in 2018. We are not saying it's wrong, but this is so sudden for us. This is like a lightning bolt for the industry. Hong Kong's economy is not doing well at the moment. Apart from the hairy crabs market, I'm sure FHD could not imagine the impacts on the trade, so I hope we can be reasonable. And you should explain the alert level for dioxins. You cannot say in front of the TV that you cannot eat hairy crabs. You should instead advise what is the maximal level you should consume. A lot of people do not know about dioxins, but they are really scared because you made an announcement on TV. I hope that the FHD can strike a balance with the trade. At that time, we had almost zero business. We were severely affected. We understand that public health should be safeguarded, but you should also consider the trade. A lot of trades are relevant. For example, logistics and the losses are huge. So I hope we should be more logical and give us some breathing space. Mr. Choi K from Shing Long Hong. The two earlier Deputations have made certain points, so I won't repeat what they said. I want to add one point. For food items like hairy crabs in the future, whenever there are new tests or requirements, you have to inform the mainland authority as soon as possible. Otherwise, it won't work. In the future, we would need to obtain approvals from FHD. For example, the consignments or samples that came on the 30th September was only tested on the 1st of November. So the impacts are grave, and this is something you must clarify. There is a lack of guidelines. That's why we face a number of issues. For livestock, seafood, etc., there must be certain standards. Otherwise, the trade cannot survive, and the public would be concerned. As other Deputations said, it's impossible to conduct tests in Hong Kong. So the government must do more in terms of surveillance. Every year, we conduct tests based on the required items. But we did not know that this substance has to be tested. So the government is blameless. They must consider this issue. As I know, FHD would inspect places like Taihu every year for hairy crabs, but this year they did not make such inspections. If they did make a visit or communicate with the authorities, this incident might not happen in the first place. If they had identified the issue and issued reminders, this incident might not have happened. So I hope the government can tackle this issue. Your time's up. Next. From Fat Ki Development Limited, Mr. Chui Chan Fat. You will not speak, right? All right, next. From Kong Ki Trading Limited, Mr. Chen Chen Kong. On this incident, as other Deputations have said, for me, I find it very hard to adjust to your requirements. The incident happened overnight. We didn't know what to do at all. Should you tell us what we should do? We want to protect our trade. We are very serious in our trade. I've been in this trade since I was a teenager. You never told us what to do, and you ignored us altogether. You only made announcements. So we were seriously affected. So the public impression is that they do not know what I'm selling, and they are afraid. You should at least tell us what we should do. You should consider the trade. We followed all the proper import and sales requirements, but we did not know about that requirement before. So at least you should tell us how we are affected, and you are asking us to show the all the consequences. Even to this day, we do not know whether we are the ones to blame. So what have we done wrong? At least you should tell us. Thank you. Next. New Sam Young, Hong Kong Limited, Mr. Chen Tio Ming. A number of Deputations have spoken. As you know, dioxins are a form of environmental toxins, and I'm sure the government would know very well. We have gathered a lot of information during this time. According to the European Union standards, well, there are no fixed standards in the EU, Hong Kong, and China. In Hong Kong, 90% of our food is imported. If you are that strict, we would not be able to import most items. But as of now, Hong Kong has no specific standards on the acceptable levels of different substances. The majority of the public does not know what dioxins are and what harms they could cause to humans. You should explain to the public where dioxins can be found. Vehicles are one source, as I know, and cigarettes are another source. So why don't you ban them? Are the levels acceptable? In Singapore, they identified dioxins before, but they asked the mainland authorities to pay attention to the level. I think the priority for you is to define standards which apply to Hong Kong. And you cited an excessive level of dioxins, but you never established the level. And the trade does not know the standards. You have to speed up your work because the next season is coming very soon, and we are counting on the business. Unless you tell us that we won't be allowed to sell hairy crabs anymore in the future. We made great losses. So hopefully, you can offer some forms of compensation. We are the main victims. That's all I want to say. Thank you. Old Sam Young, Hong Kong Limited, Ms. Kiyokfong. In this incident, the Hong Kong Government never published clear standards. Dioxins are found in animal fats, organs, seafood, etc. And this year specifically, they were found in hairy crabs as an importer. In August, I conducted tests in the mainland for substances like and I'm sure the Hong Kong Government would strike an agreement or consensus with the mainland authorities. Some of our customers wanted to buy hairy crabs, but we failed to meet the standards. So where is the consensus between the Hong Kong and mainland authorities? I tried to find laboratories in Hong Kong. I could not find any lab that can test for dioxins. Why didn't the government provide any guidelines? I wanted to do tests, but I do not have the means. This year, on the 1st of November, the Centre for Food Safety convened a press conference, and they said 90% of the hairy crabs were toxic. I do not agree. 70% were from Taihu, and you can say that a certain proportion contains toxins, but more than 90% were free of toxins. Why didn't you disclose that since from September to November? Eight consignments of hairy crabs from my company were inspected, and they all passed the standards. But the government would not announce that. On the other hand, the CFS asked all restaurants in Hong Kong to stop selling hairy crabs. Apart from importing hairy crabs from Taihu, I also import crabs from other regions, amounting to more than two tons. They all fulfilled the CFS's requirements, but we were not able to sell any of them. We also ordered dozens of tons of hairy crabs which would arrive in Hong Kong. So what can we do now? We are almost suffering a total loss. If the Hong Kong and mainland authorities do not reach a consensus, then what can the hairy crab traders do? You must give us clear guidelines. Time's up. We have one more Deputation, but he's not in yet. Let's first invite Principal Assistant Secretary for Food and Health, Mr. Kenneth Chan, to brief us on the papers. And we would also invite the government to provide a consolidated answer on the Deputation's questions, and members can also raise questions if they want. Thank you. On the latest development of the incidents of hairy crabs detected with dioxins and the import control of fresh food, we already shared a paper, and we would address Deputation's questions. And our colleagues at the CFS would supplement. Hong Kong is an open economy with very limited agricultural activities. The supply of food mainly relies on imports such as fresh food from the mainland. And import requirements for food are imposed for public health concerns. And risk assessments are done, and the CFS would require certain food items to obtain permission of FHD before arriving in Hong Kong. And the importers are required to provide health certificates issued by authorities of exporting countries.
As food in Hong Kong is mostly imported from the mainland, we have administrative arrangements set up between Hong Kong and the mainland authorities. In short, all live aquatic food animals, including hairy crabs and vegetables, should come from registered farms and processing farms with valid health certificates issued by the authorities concerned. But of course, surveillance and enforcement within Hong Kong borders are equally important. The Centre for Food Safety, therefore, take necessary steps to inspect along the food chain, including inspection and quarantine for imported food. And the CFS acts as a gatekeeper. On the 8th of November, when the CFS tested the presence of dioxins in hairy crab samples, we already explained our follow-up work to the panel, and we'd like to give you an update on the incident. On the 1st of December, we made an announcement that two hairy crab samples have exceeded the action level. We then stepped up our surveillance effort at the retail level. It was later found that the total level of dioxins and PCBs in one sample exceeded the action level. The CFS then traced the origin of the sample and also issued press releases. And we also gave an account in a paper submitted to the panel. We understand that the public has great concern about the exposure to dioxin or dioxin-like PCBs in food. And the CFS has stepped up the notification mechanism. And also has provided advice on how to reduce exposure to dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs in food. We've also prepared pamphlets to answer questions. And according to media reports, we understand that some importers have made a judicial review on our handling of the incident. So we do not want to prejudice the case, and yet we will try to answer members' and Deputation's questions without prejudice to the court proceedings. How many members would like to ask questions? Please raise your hand if you haven't done so. Seven members, including myself, and I'll start first, and then we have Monting Kwong, An Chang, Shu Ka Fei, Claudia Mo, Stephen Ho, Pierre Chan. Well, because when I put in my name, there wasn't anyone else, so I placed myself first. But anyway, if you'd like me to speak as the last member, I don't mind. So maybe Mr. Monting Kwong first. Five minutes each, questions and answers included, please. Thank you, Mem Chair.
About the presence of dioxin in hairy crab samples, the whole trade has been stifled. They're becoming extinct. Because the whole chain, from supplier to importer to retailer, retailers, all of them were affected. Hong Kong people are fond of hairy crabs. Now, first of all, dioxin in its name sounds scary because of the pronunciation in Chinese, meaning fierce. So my question is this. What is the set of criteria for selecting samples for testing? Is it by random sampling at your discretion? Or have you talked to the trade about the kind of products that you will be testing? Second question. While conducting the test, have you talked to the country of origin of the products, informing them of the test? Would the government or the authorities concerned be required to produce test reports? Because I think not only Hong Kong is affected, not only the trade is affected, I can say that even those practitioners of the trade in the mainland are also affected. It's also affected our relationship with the mainland government. I think that the Centre for Food Safety on this occasion has acted quite hastily. I'd like the Administrations to respond to that. Who would like to take the questions? Kenneth Chan. Thank you, Mem Chair. Thank you, member, for the question. On sampling criteria, let me explain that the CFS adopts a risk-based approach in conducting regular testing of food products. There are a number of factors that we consider. For example, surveillance results in the past, food incidents happened locally and overseas, and also risk analysis of food products. And in the case of hairy crabs, on the 8th of November, at the last panel meeting, the Administrations also explained that a decade ago, there were already worldwide concerns on the presence of dioxin in hairy crabs. And since then, the CFS has conducted some analysis on the impact of dioxins on humans. And having considered dietary habits and other factors, the CFS decided to adopt this action level for dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs, polychlorinated bifonols. But you haven't answered my question. Before testing hairy crabs for the level of dioxins, have you or have you not talked to the trade that you were going to conduct the test? Because as a matter of established practice, the CFS has never requested importers to
the CFS has never requested importers to test for dioxins before they import hairy crabs. And if you implement a new measure, shouldn't you communicate with the trade? Okay, so have you communicated with the trade or the mainland authorities? Who from the administration can take my question, please? Dr. Tam, can you take that question? So was the mainland aware of our test for dioxins? I'll defer to Dr. Choi to take the question. Well, in Cap 132, Public Health and Municipal Services Ordinance, there is a requirement that all food supplied to the people of Hong Kong should be fit for human consumption. And we also have a regular liaison with the mainland authorities on food safety. And in the health certificate issued by the exporting country, there is a statement showing that the food imported should be fit for human consumption. You can follow up on this later. Another deputation has arrived, and she is Chaman Man from Man Zixi Banji Hanggung Si. And if there is no objection, I'll invite her to speak first before I allow members to ask for the questions. Three minutes, Ms. Chaman Ha. I'm sorry I went the wrong way. I went to Central. I think most importantly, we should bear in mind that for aquatic products imported into Hong Kong, there is no such importing requirement that we should test for the presence of dioxin. I actually have a factory in Taihu. And next to Taihu, we have this factory, and I understand the government, the mainland authorities have very stringent control of water quality in Taihu. If something goes wrong with hairy crabs, I think that all aquatic products from the lake will encounter the same problem. And at the very first instance, we sent hairy crab samples to Germany for testing. The result was negative, meaning that it did not exceed the level. And I even have the test result with me. So I want to find out if anything has gone wrong in the transportation process. We can produce all the testing certificates and export certificates. We fulfilled all the requirements. Now, on this occasion, the government has dealt a blow to all retailers of hairy crabs, and I think it's not fair. Thank you. You haven't used up your time, so is there anything else you'd like to ask or any other comments you'd like to make? I do have a question for the administration. It's quite a serious incident. It's a major incident in so many years. And it has a significant negative impact on our trade in the future. How can we reinstate the public's confidence in our hairy crab products? I think it's still very negative to pursue liability. What we need is for the administration to come up with measures to help us instill confidence in the public. Now, many people may put a question mark on the testing process in the mainland, but we have sent samples to Germany for testing. I just want to see if the administration can help us. So perhaps let's see if the administration can respond to that later. Next member, Dr. Anne Chang, followed by Mr. Peter Shiu. Mem Chair. Well, last time we had a pork incident, and there was a public perception that all pork was tainted with asthma medicine. And again, this hairy crab incident was a serious one because we, I mean, I have friends who would give hairy crab banquets when the season arrives. But after this incident, I can say that many people now have reservations about hairy crabs. And we also have hairy crab traders making windfall when the season arrives. And again, their businesses are heavily impacted. I understand that as far as the mainland authorities are concerned, they do not test for dioxins for hairy crab exports. But I understand that when testing for chemicals, they will also test for dioxins from now on. Now, what about Hong Kong? How can we prevent a repeat when the next hairy crab season arrives? How are we going to work with the mainland authorities and align our testing standards? I'd like to have a clear answer from the administration. I see that Dr. Tam has done a lot during this time. I hope she can answer my question. And I also hope that Miss Ha's questions can be answered. The point is, how are you going to salvage confidence? Or would you be like Mrs. Margaret Chan, suggesting that people should consume chicken when the avian flu epidemic outbreak was happening? Are you going to tell the public to reassure them that the hairy crabs are all right? If the secretary can do that, I believe that starting from tomorrow, I can, I will be invited to a lot of hairy crab banquets.
Controller, are you going to take this question? She asked whether you would be willing to eat hairy crabs. That's for, it would serve a publicity purpose. Can the government explain what measures are available to reinstate confidence? Thank you. Thank you very much for the two questions from Dr. Chan. And Dr. Chan and Miss Ha might be concerned about the plans going forward. When attending the previous meeting with the secretary, we explained that the priority is for the mainland authorities to investigate why hairy crabs were contaminated with dioxins. If we do not take a specific approach, we would not achieve the desirable results. So we need to allow time for the mainland authorities to conduct investigations. As the deputation suggested, the incident is not just about the AQSIQ. Two other government departments concerned also had a part to play in this incident. So we would wait for their report. As well, whether our accountable officers or government officers would consume hairy crabs in the public. I think when hairy crabs are proved to be safe for consumption, I think this is purely a personal choice. Any other questions? I have a follow-up question. I hope the government can tell the traders clearly that before the next hairy crab season, how would the problem be solved? We don't want to see a repeat. Your time's up. Mr. Shu Ka-Fai, followed by Miss Claudia Mo. Thank you. First question. The government said we are entering judicial proceedings, so what can we disclose and whatnot? Is there anything we have to pay attention to for specific cases? According to a report on the 14th of November, 2014, we found that Tinong Hong and another company filed a judicial review, and they want the court to overrule the CFS's decision to suspend the sale of hairy crabs. So we have a judicial review on hand. And the government was requested to compensate for losses of the trade. According to Rule 41, brackets 2 of the ROP, we have to avoid talking about the relevant J R cases in panel meetings. Members cannot make discussions that prejudize the J R cases. So apart from that, you are free to discuss anything. Well noted. I have a question for Dr. Choi. Apart from the case we just mentioned, apart from the incident this year, did you ever test hairy crabs before? For food contamination with dioxins, we were aware. We have always been aware of the situation. For imported items like dairy and meat items, we did conduct tests. You wanted to ask about hairy crabs, right? For hairy crabs, we also did tests in 2014 and 15. The levels of dioxins detected were within standard. Now, I'd like to talk about a matter of principle. Among the food trade and their livelihoods hinge upon your standards or policy. I understand that the CFS serves to safeguard public health. But in terms of the standards, I'm sure you would be very careful. For example, chickens from the mainland. Hong Kong has not seen any import of chickens from the mainland for 20 months. And Macau is still importing such chickens, and the price is around $70, whereas in Hong Kong, it's $200 per chicken. And the trade is almost dying. So in terms of a balance between food safety and interest of the trade, you must strike a proper balance. I'm sure most traders would play by the law, but you must offer very clear guidelines. If tests are to be carried out, as some deputations said, they wanted to conduct the test, but no laboratory in Hong Kong can conduct such tests. And it takes 11 days or even longer for such tests. So can the hairy crabs actually survive such a long period? Perhaps they would have all died by that time. So how can you protect the trade? This is something you must look at very clearly with the trade. Well, people in the mainland are consuming mainland chickens every day. So why can't Hong Kong people enjoy the same? And the trade is dying. I hope the government would meet the mainland authorities and the trade more often to tell them what to do. Otherwise, we would, Hong Kong people would no longer be able to enjoy this item. Miss Claudia Mo, followed by Miss Stephen Ho.
I'm from a Jiangsu family, and I eat hairy crabs every year. And a lot of our deputations speak in a Shanghai dialect. Hairy crabs are a festive food in eastern China. The F H D and F H B said that chickens are problematic, so we would stop eating chickens. You said pork is problematic, so we would stop eating pork. But chicken and pork are very common food. Hairy crabs are seasonal in nature. They are a tradition. Now, you are destroying this tradition. So we wonder why you made such public announcements. As Margaret Chan said, she ate chickens every day, but we cannot do the same for hairy crabs. We cannot eat hairy crabs every day. You put an emphasis on dioxins, but as we know, they are a type of environmental toxins. And it's present in a lot of food items. I read another paper before, and it said dioxins are ubiquitous. I don't know what you would do. We were the 2014 incident, but now we had another incident this year. So what, where are we going next year? So Miss Ki and Miss Ha were actually talking about the same thing. You said 90% of the hairy crabs were problematic. Well, the fact is, 90% of the hairy crabs were from the same source. And what percentage of them were problematic? But Miss Ha tested the crabs in Germany, and they were free of, and the test results were positive or satisfactory. Anyone from the government? Dr. Choi, I'd like to clarify an issue. Can you please speak up? Please speak to the microphone.
I want to clarify that we never said that most hairy crabs, or 90% of the hairy crabs, are toxic. But on other issues, for example, the decision to suspend sales after the test results were out. As the chairman said, J R was launched, so we would not make comments at this stage as for why we made very public announcements. I want to stress that the priority of the CFS is to ensure food safety for items imported into Hong Kong. This is our top priority at the CFS. And we have always maintained close communication with importers and traders. I'm sure members would understand that the public is highly concerned about food safety. Every year, we have a food surveillance mechanism. And we would take samples on a wholesale imported retail level for tests. If a certain food sample is substandard... Sorry, you are just repeating yourself. Of course, you want to conduct tests. Of course, it's for food safety. Of course, food safety is important. But you are saying that hairy crabs are not fit But you are saying that hairy crabs are not fit for consumption. I did not attend any hairy crab feast. So what about next year? So are you asking, are you telling the trade not to raise any more crabs in the future? Mr. Stephen Ho. Thank you.
I want to emphasize that food safety is very important. And deputations and importers made some comments. I agreed with the majority of the comments. Some people talked about the history of the sale of hairy crabs. And I want to say that anything can happen for the first time. So is the government providing enough support or providing enough information to the public? And Hong Kong people have the right to know. They should know if the hairy crabs are substandard. Did the Hong Kong government say what is the acceptable level of consumption? And they said that if we consume more than eleven hairy crabs, there would be a risk. But the government has not stressed this message. They only issued a press release. They only said it once. And as such, the public has forgotten. They would only see news on the newspaper. And as such, they no longer want to buy hairy crabs. And this is a huge hit for the trade. The government should learn from the experience. You have to stress the message every day, every month. You have to convey the right message to the Hong Kong public every single day so the public can make a judgment for themselves. Right now, the public feels that the crabs are toxic and they no longer want to purchase them.
Second point, I think the aquacultures bear the brunt. Because every now and then you come up with new testing standards and then they will be responsible for any positive results. So in fact, apart from the marine cultures, you need to set up a good mechanism to protect other stakeholders such as importers, retailers. Because the test results would mean the end for them. I hope that you can review your system and see if you're keeping up with the times. Some of the provisions are outdated. And like Mr. An Chang, like Dr. An Chang said, the next hairy crab season will arrive and you need to consider how to revamp this, the import of hairy crabs and how to salvage public confidence. I know that you're working with the central authorities, but meanwhile, you also need to step up publicity. You need to update the public with the results of the latest sample test to salvage public confidence that dioxins are no longer present in hairy crabs. Lastly, I hope that the Hong Kong government and the mainland authorities should consider licensing the farms. Say if sample from farm one is tested positive, then all the farms should be banned under this license. I want to know whether you can make sure that the supply is free of toxins and you can also reduce the impact on the trade. Who would take the questions, please? No response from all the comments that I've made. Do you need a comment? Do you need a response? Yes, please. Who would like to respond to Mr. Stephen Ho's question? They went dead air for over twenty seconds. Thank you, member, for the question. Mr. Ho asked a number of questions. So first on risk disclosure. We understand the public's concern on exposure to battery exposure to dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs. The CFS understands the public's concerns and we understand that there is a need to step up our liaison mechanism on the food risks. Starting from November, in fact, after testing a batch of hairy crab samples, the CFS has been stepping up its publicity efforts, including the issuance of press releases. The CFS has also prepared an FAQ for public access so that in a comprehensible way, the public will be given more information. And this is about risk disclosure. On salvaging public confidence. After the suspension of supply of hairy crabs from the two farms concerned as announced on the first of November by the CFS. We have a list of aquatic products farm in the mainland and we have over seventy registered farms which are qualified. And according to the order made on the first of November, hairy crabs from two of the farms concerned were banned from being imported into Hong Kong. As for other farms not affected, if they comply with the relevant requirements in the laws of Hong Kong, including the provision of health certificate issued by mainland authorities, they can continue to supply their food products to Hong Kong. On risk disclosure, I'll see if the CFS would like to supplement. Anything? No. Next, Dr. Pierre Chan. Thank you, Mem Chair. Now, we're here to discuss the incidence of hairy crabs detected with dioxins. I also have some comments. The government has spent so much money on it. We have the PS. We also have the controller for CFS attending the meeting. And only when I joined the Legislative Council did I realize that, in fact, all the, all kinds of food products, pork, beef, seafood, et cetera, consumed by my family, including my young daughter, is affected. Well, in fact, last was, another member talked about the tainted pork incident. In fact, I asked a written question. I have yet to receive the reply from the administration. The administration back then omitted their responsibility and then agreed to disburse excursia payment as compensation. Now, for doctors and nurses, they're subject to disciplinary action. Members who have done wrong in this council will be subject to re, sanction. In fact, last week at the same panel meeting on the thirteenth, the administration proposed to create two directorate posts for the Center for Food Safety. That's D two grade on food safety. So that means after scolding them, they would create two posts and get two public, government officials promoted. My two questions are as follows. First, can the government follow international standards and set levels for local surveillance program? When food is imported from outside Hong Kong, we should adopt the standard. And the same standard should apply to all food products, including crab, pork, et cetera. Now, I'd like to ask this question once again. Last time I asked it, in the past ten years, I'd like to know the one-off excursia payment as compensation. How much has been paid out by the administration? I'd like to have a table of compensation amounts in relation to, say, crabs, pork, even tortoises. Now, I am not opposed to the creation, to creation of the two directorate posts. I just want the CFS to really do something. Would the administration answer Dr. Pierre Chan's question? Would the standard be set for dioxin level? Thank you. Mem Chair, thank you, member, for the question. As explained in the last panel meeting and as explained by Dr. Choi just now, we have the Public Health and Municipal Services Ordinance, Cap one three two, which stipulates that all food supplied and sold in Hong Kong should be food for, fit for human consumption. And the Center for Food Safety has been considering the international trends and dietary habits in setting the maximum residue limit of dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs in food. Now, as explained just now, we're concerned about the international standards or local standards for the presence of dioxins or dioxin-like PCB. And in, on the point of compensation, we now have a judicial review case. I'm afraid that we cannot answer specific questions since it is in sub judice. But in general, we're concerned about food safety and will continue to closely monitor the international surveillance efforts on food safety, especially the different measures for detecting and testing for dioxins in food and will continue to improve our work in this regard. Another question that he asked is this, the amount of compensation paid out by the administration during past enforcement actions. Well, now it's my turn. I'd like to pick up on Dr. Pierre Chan's question. We have an action level for dioxins and that's six point five picogram, if I remember correctly. And according to the administration's paper, the World Health Organization also have levels for dioxins. Now, what is unclear is this, as pointed out by the deputations, with the health certificates issued by the mainland, there has never been, it has never been the practice to test for dioxins. So we have an ambiguity here. On the one hand, you suggest that the local law stipulates that all food supplied or sold in Hong Kong should be fit for human consumption. And if the dioxins level exceeds the action level, they would be, need to be taken off the shelf. And yet, if the hairy crabs come with health certificates issued by the mainland authorities, then from the supplier's perspective, they should be able to import the hairy crabs. So the dilemma is that the mainland authorities do not test for dioxins, whereas the Center for Food Safety is acting as our gatekeeper. So it has to do with a lack of communication with the mainland authorities. Because, is it right, the controller, that you also tested for dioxins last year in twenty fifteen and then there was no positive case? Now, this year, you again tested for dioxins, which was a good thing. And then you found the presence of dioxins in hairy crab samples from Taihu. So the question is, why didn't the administration inform the mainland authorities that they should also test for dioxins when they export hairy crabs? And that our action level has been set at six point five picograms? Controller. Mem Chair, my legal advice is, the legal advice I receive is that I'm not in a position to comment at this stage. No, but it has to do with how our laws and measures are enforced by the CFS. It could be dioxins, it could be other things. Well, are you aware of the tests conducted by the mainland authorities before the food arrives in Hong Kong? Do you regularly liaise with your counterpart? Let me explain the situation in general. The importer and export, or importing or exporting countries would liaise on matters relating to food safety, fair trade, and things that may harm food safety or that may cause a safety concern would be included in the healthy, health certificate. Well, that started in nineteen ninety-eight. We had tainted pork with medicine for asthma. And then in twenty oh one, there were concerns over forty-four types of veterinary drugs and harmful substances present in food. Whereas for dioxins, I can say for sure that as of now, it is not a regulated substance in the health certificate. But we need to consider that in our way forward. I don't quite understand, Controller. Because if dioxins is not a regulated substance in your health certificate and yet according to the test results, it has exceeded the action level and that the crabs have to be taken off the shelf because they are unfit for human consumption, there is a conflict. I really cannot reply to you here, Mem Chair, because we have received advice from the DOJ. Now, let's say if we found any food sample exceeding the action level of six point five picogram, be it hairy crabs or fish, then can it be imported? Would the, would the supplier break the law?
Controller. For different food items, the safety standards might be different. So it really depends on the case. I think this is getting more, even more confusing. If we have very clear laws and guidelines, whether the food is from the mainland or other countries, the same standards should apply. The question is whether the government would legislate on these standards. Right now, the situation is very confusing and it can happen on hairy crabs, fish or any other foods. Is the government prepared to legislate on the standard or levels of dioxins allowed? Is there any such plan? Chairman. I would try to address the question. As we understand, you were asking about two separate issues. First of all, for foods apart from hairy crabs, the, whether the levels of dioxins or dioxin-like PCBs would apply. And number two, going forward, would there be a need to legislate on the level of dioxins? As for the action level of six point five picograms would apply for dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs would apply only to hairy crabs. And as the chairman explained, dioxins are a special type of toxins. Apart from a presence in the environment, it can only exist as a byproduct of industrial activities. Many international bodies have had discussions and follow-up work on this. And the Food Codex is something we took reference to. And the Codex has standards on the levels of dioxins and dioxin-like PCBs. And in the UN Joint Food and Agriculture Organization and the WHO Expert Committee on Food Additives, allowable intake of dioxins have been established. And the CFS would disclose such data. Due to the special nature of the, of dioxins, there have been Due to the special nature of dioxins, there have been discussions on the international scene. As for the proposal to legislate, we would pay attention to discussions in different jurisdictions as well as the consumption habits in Hong Kong. We would keep tabs with the situation before deciding the path ahead. So in other words, you will monitor the situation, but you have no plans to legislate. So this is indeed very confusing. After we drew the line, four members came in. But since time is limited, of course, we hope that members can participate. Lan Kwong-Hung, Chan Pan, Ray Chan, and Dr. K. Kwok, four minutes each. We would draw the line after that. Mr. Lan Kwong-Hung. I agree that we have to investigate this incident. Now, there are two different views. Some importers said their crabs are okay after carrying out tests. So you have to explain why they are problematic. You have to investigate the incident at source. Since there are multiple sources of dioxins, if there is no health inspection mechanism in place between yourself and the mainland authorities, how can you play the role of gatekeeper? In terms of transport, import, storage, etc., would you test every single stage? Or you would only test the samples upon arrival? So this has to do with the mainland authorities. And when the crabs are extracted from the lake, is there any tests? And what about during the transportation and other stages? Nothing had been done. So how could you identify the source of dioxins? You should not blame the CFS. Food safety is very important. Of course, they would not care about other factors or the source. They would only know whether an item or food is safe or not. For a food item, if it costs a lot to test for food safety, should the manufacturer or supplier or the government be responsible? I don't eat hairy crabs because they are very expensive. But for those who do, you have to think about the customers. If you can provide safety assurance, they would be happy. So you cannot blame the CFS because they are just safeguarding food safety. Well, I don't know because I never eat hairy crabs. Perhaps, I don't know about the prices. Perhaps it's $400 per caddy at the moment. If you, if after implementing the food safety measures, the prices go up to $600, I don't see any issue at all. Hairy crabs are a seasonal food and people would pay as long as they are happy. If the mainland wants to classify that, classify hairy crabs as a seasonal food, I don't see any issue. So after the crabs leave the lake and they are transported, there should be safety assurance throughout the chain. So I do not quite understand the case. The Hairy Crabs Traders Association would ensure the safety of the crabs from farm to table. And people who like hairy crabs would not think about price. They all have money. Your time is up, Mr. Chan Pan. Thank you. In September, the government conducted tests and they made an announcement in November and after around fifty days. But the traders could get the test done within eleven days. If the government announced the news earlier, they wouldn't purchase so many crabs. And as such, they suffered heavy losses. I would not blame the CFS for playing the role of gatekeeper because that is your responsibility. But with this incident, traders suffered great losses. As the chairman said, the import permit did not require them to conduct such tests. I went to different universities in Hong Kong. They do have the equipment in place. But the equipment is not used for testing toxins in food. So as such, it's very hard for traders to conduct tests. Our traders would not be able to fulfill the government's requirements. So I think the losses they suffered were avoidable. The deputations talked about the issue of compensation. How does the government intend to compensate for their losses? They suffered great losses. So what would the government's arrangements be? Anyone? Mr. Chen Chen. Thank you very much for the question. As for the testing procedures, Mr. Chen is right in that the testing procedures for toxins and dioxin-like PCBs are very complicated and sophisticated. I'd like to know about compensations. Last week, there were media reports that some hairy crab traders applied for an approval for judicial review from the court. And the issue of compensation was touched upon and very specific amounts were also mentioned. Since the case has already entered proceedings, we would not comment on that. I expected you to give that answer. So let me ask you another question. If an imported, imported animal with eight legs and would, how would the government calculate the compensation amounts? So under what situation would the government provide statutory compensations? Dr. Choi. We cannot comment on the cases. We are not commenting about the cases. When we talk about compensations, we would identify the responsibilities. How about the, how about for incidents like the hairy crab? Sorry, we cannot answer that question. What about the general procedures? If the government is to blame, is to be blamed, how would they compensate? Is there any formula? Chairman. The CFS is not to blame. It's a problem with the mechanism. The mechanism should be able to address the incident. Even if there's a pending case, it doesn't mean nothing can be done. Mr. H. Chen. On the detection of dioxins in hairy crabs, the consumers and retailers both suffered. Many members asked about the situation next year. Mrs. Stephen Ho said they included dioxins as a regular test item. Is this a new arrangement? Before next year, apparently, there won't be new rules or laws. And the same goes for Hong Kong. So what would be done? Would more tests be conducted? Or would the tests be conducted earlier or sped up? In other words, the results can be released before the start of the season to minimize losses. Any specific measures on what to do next year in order to avoid a repeat of such incident? Any specific measures? Dr. Choi. Did the central authorities include toxins as a regular test item? Two questions. We would communicate with the mainland. They have to know the origin or history of the incident before a remedy can be identified. As for the tests, Mr. H. Chen made a number of suggestions, for example, speeding up the tests, working with the mainland authorities on the test methodologies, etc. And if samples are found to be substandard, would there be remedies? And the testing standards, etc. And in Hong Kong, we would continue to carry out food surveillance and tests.
Now, for all of these mentioned above, I think we can take this time to consider them. I think that's all I can respond to Mr. H. Chen's question. And as our regular effort, we continue to liaise with the testing authorities in the mainland. As far as the administration understands, has the mainland authorities undertaken to do anything? At this stage, I really cannot answer Mr. H. Chen's question. Dr. Choi. At the last panel meeting, you did mention that the mainland had agreed to include dioxins as one of the substances to be tested. And are you discussing with them how the tests are to be conducted and what the action levels should be? Are these true? Well, they have responded positively to our suggestions. But we're still discussing the details, such as the testing methods, when samples should be taken. We'll continue to liaise with them on these details. But I understand that the mainland authorities also share our concern on dioxins. Their response is positive. So before the next season arrives, are you confident that you can implement some of the measures? Yes, definitely. Some improvements will be made. Next, Dr. Kwok-Aki.
I think it is very difficult to align the different standards between the mainland and Hong Kong. And we cannot force our own CFS to adopt another standard. I think it's quite, I feel quite helpless that the CFS has detected the presence of dioxins in hairy crab samples and advised the public not to consume hairy crabs. But I would not blame the CFS for that. Has it to do with the action level set? Have you given clear information to the importers so that they would be responsible for taking action, regardless of whether they meet the mainland's requirement? Because by doing so, they can avoid incurring any loss. Well, this may not be relevant to your case. And I don't think you should be too worried because even C Y Lang has continued to make all sorts of remarks despite judicial review cases are involved. So my question is, apart from hairy crabs, for other aquatic products imported into Hong Kong, freshwater, seafood, etc., I think it would be easier if you can detect the dioxins level in these products as well. Thank you, Dr. Kwok, for your question. As explained previously, we'll continue to monitor the international surveillance effort on toxins levels in food. No, my question is, when you're going to do that? Don't just say closely monitor the situation because we see a series of incidents. If you can include the standards in your legislation, then there is no need to have this debate every time a food product is imported into Hong Kong. Thank you for your question. The feature of the characteristic of dioxins is that it is present in the general environment and it is generated as a byproduct of human activities. And there are different standards, right, there are different standards worldwide. In fact, the Codex has not set a safety level for dioxins in food. But P A S, we already have relevant standards in European Union and other countries. Well, their levels are set based on the local people's dietary habits and other circumstances. And as I said just now, our next step is to check the various standards set by international organizations and countries and our local dietary habit. But that's why I say we will continue to closely monitor the situation and make improvements. But at this stage, we are unable to give you a timetable. So it's not a meaningful reply. But anyway, let's consider our way forward. We are not going to trust the mainland standards. I think the importers likewise will not believe in the mainland's standards again. So are there any ways to reassure the public that the hairy crabs are safe for consumption? Can you do some joint tests? Let's invite the administration to give a written reply instead. You can't answer now? Right. I think we've spent enough time on this topic. We have so many hairy crab retailers and suppliers here. Can you tell us by what time next year should you be sure about the results so as to prevent any loss? We, in fact, it's one year because we need to find a place where the water, where the water quality is good with good flow of water. Taihu Lake is a big lake and different parts of the lake may have different water quality. We also have crab seeds. We test crab seeds. And there is no presence of dioxins. In January, every year, we capture crab seeds in Yangtze River and for spawning. Of course, the administration was right in saying that we have over seventy registered farms. And of course, apart from the two band, we can source the hairy crabs from other qualified registered farms. But in fact, on the first of November, the, or rather, first of December, the CFS took the initiative to ring the suppliers, asking them not to import hairy crabs. But in fact, apart from hairy crab products from the affected area, we also have hairy crab products from other areas. we also have hairy crab products from other areas. And the broad-brush effort of product recall was made, and it's very unfair. Sorry, time is up. I thank you for your comment. And we'd also like to hear from Mr. Chan Chan Kong as well. Something about timing, please? Well, of course, it's as soon as possible because we need to be sure about our next step. This is our concern as well. Well, the administration just now gave us replies, and it's really meaningless. We don't know what our next step should be. We don't know whether we should continue to do what we're doing, and it's really vague. We have no idea. Thank you. Will the administration or the controller try to communicate with the industry as soon as possible before the next hairy crab season arrives? Let them know your policy. What will be done? So that people would be reassured that the hairy crabs would be safe for consumption. Can you improve that? Can you put your policy on paper? Let us know as soon as possible. And before you do that, I hope that you also discuss with the trade. I understand that it may have to do with your operations. Sometimes, crabs from Taichou and Xiantao City would be placed together. But, well, if one source is problematic without the implant of chips in crabs, and if the crabs are put in the same water tank, the public's confidence may be affected. So you need to discuss with the trade and come up with measures that can really improve the situation. So no timetable? Right, they have no timetable, and I think the administration should give us one. When you can formulate this policy? Because they are supposed to start spawning of hairy crabs soon. Well, Ma'am Chair, we are the local trade practitioners, but I think more importantly, they should reach consensus with the mainland authorities. Because after that incident, the mainland suppliers stopped supplying hairy crabs to Hong Kong because they could not communicate with the F V H D. Yes, I think this is an important message. I think they've got your message. You need to have a common standard. Because if we have different standards, then they may have different approaches to the import of food. I think we should wrap up discussion of this item here. The administration will supplement their replies in writing. And I also thank the applications to have come to our meeting. If you have written submissions, please give them to our staff. We'll follow up on them. Members, please note that we have another agenda item in relation to site formation and associated infrastructural works for development of columbarium, crematorium, and related facilities in Sandy Ridge Cemetery. I thank representatives of the Center for Food Safety and F V H D for attending, and we'll invite the next team of administration in. Undersecretary, please very succinctly walk us through your proposal, this paper on Sandy Ridge Cemetery. Thank you, Ma'am Chair. Thank you, members. We understand that we have this district-based columbarium initiative to be shared among eighteen districts collectively, and we have identified twenty-four potential sites in the eighteen districts. Sandy Ridge Cemetery is one of the twenty-four sites. It is in the North District. It is at the moment used as a place for storing coffins and niches, and we propose to provide the one-stop service for the public. For Sandy Ridge Cemetery, it can provide two hundred thousand niches. The development will be phased to tie in with the allotment of or sale of niches in phases. But before we implement the project, we need to commence site formation and the associated infrastructural works. So this is a paper on the works as mentioned. We'd like to upgrade the project. The project scope involves site formation in Sandy Ridge Cemetery, a widening of a section of Shaoling Road, and then Ningma Hang Road, and then the construction of pickup and drop-off points near Shaoling Road and Mancomto Road, then the associated infrastructural works. Plans of the proposed site formation and associated infrastructural works, including attentive layout of columbarium buildings, are set up in enclosures one to seven. On public consultation in November, or between December and February twenty thirteen, we consulted the public on upgrading the project to category A. We also consulted the panel and finance committee, and we also engaged, commissioned a consultant to conduct an impact assessment on site formation and the associated infrastructural works. Then the consultancy conducted the detailed study. And after that, we would proceed with detailed design and site investigation works. As the works and the design have been completed, we plan to seek funding approval from the finance committee for upgrading part of five-seven-five-eight C L to category A for the construction of the project, meaning the project covering site formation and associated infrastructural works for Sandy Ridge Cemetery. And we also consulted the North District Council, which had no objection to the project on the ninth of October twenty fourteen.
The relevant road and sewage works were published in Gazette in February two oh one five, and the Ningma Hang Road was approved, and the Shaoling Road works and sewage works were also approved. On money of the day prices, the capital cost of the project would be about two point five six six four billion dollars. If the application is approved at the P W S C and Finance Committee, the proposed works are expected to commence in the same quarter of two oh one seven for completion by the fourth quarter of twenty twenty. Thank you. Members who wish to speak, please raise your hands. Mr. Chan Pan, Mr. Ray Chan, Mr. Yu Si Wang, finally myself. Three minutes, three minutes each. Mr. Chan Pan. The government intends to build two hundred thousand niches in Sandy Ridge, but the traffic capacity in Sandy Ridge is limited, and the roads cannot cater for such capacity for the two hundred thousand niches. There are major issues in the area in terms of traffic, and the large inflow of people might cause risks. Does the administration have any measures in place to ease the flow? Any measures in terms of traffic and transport? Due to the size of the site and the traffic assessment, we found that two hundred thousand niches were feasible. Nonetheless, we pay attention to traffic as well. So the road widening works would help facilitate possible diversion of crowds in the future. Even though we will have two hundred thousand new niches, the intake would be phased. The Transport Department, F V H D, and the Hong Kong Police Force. During Chingming and Chongyang, we would monitor the capacity and traffic, and there would be crowd control measures. Then if there are problems, the police would have other measures in place. So perhaps my team can supplement. Principal Assistant Secretary, the Undersecretary made a few points, and perhaps the C E D D can supplement. According to the traffic impact assessment on the sixteen main junctions, we conducted assessments if necessary. If traffic control measures are necessary, we have also consulted the police. And when consulting district councils, we have explained proposals to district councillors. For instance, some bus routes can bypass Mancomto, and we have addressed such requests or queries. By the time the works are commenced, we are confident that we can manage the traffic. Please pay attention to traffic because the roads there are very narrow. Mr. Ray Chan, thank you. It's indeed difficult to find a site big enough to accommodate two hundred thousand niches, and the works would commence soon. We can discuss the details later at the P W S C. And according to the paper, the North District Council did not object. Of course, we trust you. However, we understand that certain district personnel have strong views. Can the government tell us whether there would be strong views from the district towards the, just before the commencement, traffic is one major issue, as I know. Of the twenty-five sites identified across eighteen districts, can you give an update of the progress? Every district must make some sacrifice. We cannot victimize one specific or particular district. The North District already has a landfill and footway center, which are undesirable facilities. I hope that people in all eighteen districts can put things in perspective, and you should convince them that you have done your best. Professor Shen, thank you very much for the question. We went to the North District Council. There are no major issues at the moment. Generally speaking, whenever we visit district councils, they would have concerns about traffic in the light, in the site formation and road widening works. Together with the measures we mentioned, we are confident of overcoming the issue. Of the twenty-four identified sites, I can provide a progress update. Of the, in eighteen of the sites, we have obtained support from district councils, and that translates to almost five hundred ninety thousand niches. And it almost consists two-thirds of all the niches to be provided. So we have achieved this number. Can you share the details about the fourteen sites and number of niches to members? Yes, as possible. For the rest, did you face great opposition or objection? In two of the sites, we will start consulting district councils in two oh one seven. For five other sites, once plans and designs are ready, we would begin works. Can you provide a progress update of the twenty-four sites? Yes, we might ask about them again at the P W S C. Mr. Yu Si Wang, thank you. Hong Kong lacks columbarium, and the government is trying to identify sites for niches, and I would support this plan. And the recycling or resumption of land is a contentious issue recently. And one thousand two hundred and seventy square meters of private land would be resumed. I'm not sure if this would be a problem. And as for, I'd like to know whether there are any brownfield sites in the area accommodating other facilities which might affect your work. Would land resumption be involved? Principal Assistant Secretary, the government would adopt a minimalistic approach to minimize the impacts on private land. We also worked with the Lands Department on the resumption of the two thousand odd square meters of land, and there are no major issues. Is it included in the budget, or would a separate funding application be needed? We are talking about private land spanning one thousand two hundred and ninety square meters. This funding exercise is mainly for site formation and ancillary works. What is the total cost of this project? Two point five six billion dollars. This is for the entire project excluding the land resumption costs. You would, the project would be completed by phases. So in other words, the two point five six billion dollars does not include the follow-up work. It only includes the items under paragraph six of the paper. This is a partial upgrade. So in the future, for remaining works and buildings, they would fall under another budget. So right now, members have no way to know how much the entire project would cost before you come to the P W S C. Can you share the cost with us? And if you come here bit by bit, if you divide up the works in bits and pieces, members would not know the overall cost of the project before you go to the P W S C. Can such figures be provided? They can only come up with estimations after carrying out the design work. As for whether they can provide accurate figures, it might not be possible at this stage. When we apply for funding at the P W S C, we have compared the unit costs with similar projects. We would embrace a value-for-money approach. So we might not be able to share all the figures at this early stage, but we would certainly embrace a value-for-money approach. If you can let us know the big picture, we would, it would be easier for members. You have to let people know. You should show the big picture, even though you might not have very accurate or concrete figures. You should show the big picture, even though you might not have very accurate or concrete figures. You can share the estimations with us for the entire Sandy Ridge project. We would look into that. Since time is almost up, barring any objections, does anyone object to the submission of this project to the Public Works Subcommittee? If not, it would proceed. Hopefully, the government can provide more information for reference. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.